All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 and ask Cindy to read the statement of compliance for the Open Public Meetings Act into the record, please.
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act with the meeting notice provided to the newspapers, individuals on the listserv, department heads, and posted on the bulletin board at City Hall and the city's website. The meeting agenda offers planned actual items at the time of publication and subject to change. This meeting is being streamed live using the Zoom meeting platform and will be recorded. Will call?
Please.
Councilwoman Cominsky?
Here.
Councilwoman Lambert?
Here.
Councilman Lyne?
Here.
Council President Sagan?
Here.
Mayor Toots?
Here. These are the pledge of allegiance remains in moment silence in honor of our troops serving here in Rock. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and just for all.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open this portion of the meeting up to public comments. As we do, we welcome the public at each meeting to speak. Beginning of the meeting, there's also a second public comment period at the end of the meeting. I will note that tonight we will have a closed session, the duration of which I do not know. So probably better for people to make public comment now rather than to wait for an unspecified period of time to do it later. So we are without microphones again. I'm sorry to say. But Cindy would ask you just to project if you could step to the podium, state your name, your address. You have three minutes of uninterrupted time to make remarks and or ask questions.
Lawrence Wall, Archer and Greiner. I'm here. I live in Delaware Township, but I'm here representing Ryan Spring, Delview Arcade LLC this evening. I understand that there's an ordinance that has been proposed. I went on your website today and pulled the ordinance and I see that it has actually changed since then. So I would ask if this matter be tabled until the public has an opportunity to really see the ultimate language that's being proposed. During that period of time of tabling, I believe it would be appropriate, since this ordinance really, when you get down to it, only affects my client's business, that maybe we should have a meeting to discuss things like fees. I read the ordinance, the fee structures from my perspective is outrageous. The hours of operation, you can go to a tavern in town until 2:00 in the morning, but you can't go to an arcade after 10:00 p.m. Unreasonable. My client already, starting in July, obtained a zoning permit for construction, a CO, a city retail food and cell phone license category one, a zoning permit for signage. He submitted floor plans of his planned operation, which then included a soda shop, which is now defunct because of the regulations that have been imposed by the construction office, that his food vendors have basically abandoned him because they don't want to put up with the added aggravation. He received Hunter County Department of Health risk-based inspection report conducted in November of 2022, a DNR now commissioned general permit one, and a Hunter County Health Department sanitary inspection, as well as a flood hazard development permit. He's gone above and beyond, as any business owner in this municipality would have to do, to open up his business. And now he faces an ordinance with unreasonable fees, unreasonable hours, that also discusses alcoholic beverage service, cannabis usage, and things which I think are of the purview of the state of New Jersey to some extent. I think it would be helpful if my client and members of the city council or your professionals met to work out a reasonable fee structure, reasonable hours, get to the bottom of the issue of whether or not he is subject to municipal ordinances involving alcohol, or whether he can fully comply with the BYOB statute. And again, it makes sense to work this out rather than have the city adopt an ordinance that's going to be challenged. And I don't, I don't think that makes any sense for the taxpayers, or for you, or for our time. So I think that's probably my three minutes. And again, I think this should be tabled. The ordinance was not on your website in its form, in its current form. I didn't see it until I walked in here to see.
What else in the room?
Thank you. Peter Hollis, 41 Lambert Lane. Thank you for your service, by the way. I'm going to talk about the bridge rehabilitation and specifically the outcome of the meeting on Friday. I know some of you were there. There's obviously a lot of issues coming up out of that. My first question would be whether or not the council had an opportunity to participate in the planning or anything prior to now. I'm not surprised, because what was sort of apparent during their sessions is that this was something they're going to do. They let me say, think, and then they're going to go do what they want to do. And I just think that's unacceptable and unreasonable. Obviously, there are two issues, one being the walkway that is most concerned to me, that they have said they're going to close it. They say three months, and then if you ask different people, the same question, you get different answers. They clearly have a lot of open-ended issues. They're intending to just move forward on July with the final design, and I suspect nothing's going to be considered. And there were a lot of reasons given that they couldn't. So my assessment, my view is that they should allow pedestrians, as opposed to cars, to cross the bridge. They had a whole list of reasons you couldn't do it. None of them struck me as being valid in terms of being able to make an accommodation for the community. And I just ask that you please act on our behalf, because I'm quite disappointed that I'm the only one here talking about this. And it's amazing, quite frankly, it's going to impact a lot of people. Very few people have heard about it, except for business people, paid attention to it. Most people don't know about this. And everybody's upset, but that's their, this is, I'm talking for myself. I love to walk across that bridge every day there all year. Don't care how cold it is. And so I'd ask you to consider looking at a process to engage, not the staff, because I went through all the questions, all my questions of the staff, to Mr. Resta, the executive director, was very offended that I was even asking these questions and probing into the reasons that they had for doing what they did. And to the extent that he said, you know, so I asked him for questions, for instance, you know, how does the shuttle going to run? They didn't know. The timing, they didn't know. What do you think the timing would be? He says, oh, probably will stop at 10 o'clock, which is a total misunderstanding of how that bridge and this community uses that bridge. So there's a lot of outstanding things. Nothing, nothing's wrong valid, in my opinion, that couldn't be discussed and may be overcome. There was an issue of the lights. I'm actually probably the only one I know that is interested in light.
Finish up, please.
There's a lot of issues there. They did no studies. I'd like to see a study that they've done, perhaps, of the traffic, who's going to be impacted, how, when, how, where. There's a lot of open-ended things here that I just think you have to go to the commission rather than the staff to have them address it.
Anyone else in the room? Anyone online?
Yes, Judy Gleason, 86 North Union Street. I wanted to mention two things. One, I wanted to agree with the previous speaker about how important it is for the council to make clear that there are positions that the bridge repair people need to hear. I know we're all in favor of fixing the bridge, so I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying the people who use the bridge, the people who get to their jobs on the bridge, the tourists that use the bridge, that are important to our business community on both sides of that river, need to hear from the council, need to hear from the governments on both sides. And I hope, as you know from the last meeting, when I said this, that I really hope that you guys will take an active role in this. When I spoke to them, they said, if you do, maybe they'll have another public meeting. That's my first thing. My second thing is, I'm not sure I understand the wording of the ordinance you're discussing tonight completely. But to the extent that the applicant is a nonprofit, a club license, which the applicant may be seeking, which I don't know, but I would be in favor of supporting a club license, if the applicant is a nonprofit, as required under New Jersey law, I would support such approval by the council. Thank you.
Anything else? May I motion to close the public comment period, please?
Second.
Okay, please say hi.
Hi.
All right. Carrie's, just a couple of notes here. Thank you for speaking, Mr. Wall. I appreciate it. I don't know that we can actually table an ordinance that we haven't introduced yet. Is that, will you have a review on that?
It doesn't, the guiding fee actually would be whether the movement or not.
Okay. All right. So we will take that matter up in a minute. In terms of Peter's questions, did we participate in the planning of the bridge restoration or repair work? No, we were not invited to do that. And, you know, I was at the meeting, and I know the council president's statement was there. I know some of the council people went. But certainly, I would be more than happy to request a second public, you know, second public meeting at this, on the side of the bridge for the public to attend. I would note that, you know, we did put notice in local matters, which goes to 2,500 subscribers every week. So, you know, I think that that, I mean, my, my view of the publicity for that, that meeting was, I think it was probably pretty broad. It was publicized on Facebook, it was publicized through the Bridge Commission. We publicized it. So I think that there was, in my, my opinion, adequate information out there in terms of, you know, the meeting and inviting people to participate. Otherwise, you know, you know, I can try and have conversations with the council members to see what they think about this. You know, my conversations or in my outreach with the Bridge Commission, they were very specific about wanting to handle all of the matters themselves, that they really didn't want necessarily, or feel that it was appropriate for the governing body to, to involve itself in the, in the planning of this. You know, it is not in our jurisdiction. So, you know, while we certainly can act on behalf of kind of resident questions, I don't know that we really have a lot of teeth in terms of what's going to happen with the, with the bridge repair. I would just personally, I think that obviously after 20 years, the bridge does need work. I think the replacement of pedestrian walkway is going to add a great deal of benefit to the bridge. And from my, from where I sit, I've met with, with representatives several times, I feel as though the, the planning has been responsible and fairly well done. It's, it's, it's hard to close the bridge. Nobody wants to do it. And I understand that there are a number of pragmatic and practical concerns for residents on both sides of the bridge. And we're certainly happy to ask those questions on behalf of residents.
Yeah, of course. Just about the lights, too, because I have heard a lot of people talking about that and how that's going to change. I had not known about it, but apparently they're going to put lights on the side of it that can change colors and everything. So, you know, I think it would be appropriate to have a meeting with them to discuss that, because I think it's going to affect a lot of people's enjoyment of the river, and it's certainly going to be a change. So I agree, we unfortunately do not have jurisdiction over that. Joint toll commission, they get to make the rules with that, but hopefully they'll listen to us. And, you know, maybe with that second meeting, public meeting, maybe we could talk a little more about that.
Yeah, I see no reason why we can't ask for another public meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's important that while we lack jurisdiction, I think it's important that we act as advocates for our, you know, our members of the public. I'm particularly concerned, of course, I'm concerned about the tourist impact, because that affects our businesses. And I am concerned about that. But even more concerning to me is those hospitality workers that walk across the bridge because they don't have vehicles. And, you know, they're not, they're going to be working erratic hours. They don't get the same schedule. And I think it's really important that we have, have outreach to that community. And I'm kind of thinking we might want to maybe partner with, I don't know, somebody like Fisherman's Mark to have a bilingual, because there's probably a lot of Spanish-speaking, you know, workers that, that could be impacted by that. They need to be aware.
I think that's a good idea. So I'll reach out to the Bridge Commission and see whether they're open to, listen to the meeting that has a translator, because I think your, your point is an important one. Just lastly, walking across the bridge is very difficult. I've only done it twice in the parades. It's a slippery open bridge. Yeah, I would think for safety reasons, that's, that is not, that will not work. Just as an FYI, you almost never get to walk across the actual bridge. But I would say it's dangerous. And just lastly, I believe, Judy, that, that the social club is not a non-for-profit. I believe it is a for-profit business. So, and am I incorrect with that?
Correct.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to move on. Ordinance is first reading and introduction. Ordinance number 24-2023. This is an ordinance to amend the Landfill City Code 2014, Chapter 5, mechanical music machines, amusement devices, and vending machines. We did take a look at this. We amended it a couple of times, and we thought that the best way, cleanest way to proceed was to introduce a new ordinance with a public hearing scheduled for July 20th, 2023. So just a little bit of background, you know, Mr. Wall is correct. We did take a look at this ordinance when Mr. Spring did form his social club. There was initially a question about the means of payment for machines, the machines that, you know, no longer just, they take more than just, more than just coins. The original ordinance just referred to coins. And so we wanted to make sure that we updated it to reflect that credit cards or other forms of payment could be accepted by the machines. So we did do that. I did have email exchange with Mr. Spring back in the spring to talk a little bit about the amendment of the ordinance. I did at that time indicate that, you know, we would take a look at the ordinance, that, you know, we would make best determination that certain things, like the fees, may stay the same, they may go up, they may be lower. So, you know, I do want to say that, you know, we did do plenty of notes that there were going to be changes here, and that we were going to look at this. As it stands now, I'm perfectly comfortable with the reintroduction of this ordinance. And I want to give a moment for the council to make any comments it would like to before I ask for motion.
Mayor, I have some concerns just about, not really about the ordinance itself, but Mr. Spring, when you had emailed us, talked about, you know, alcohol in there, whether or not this is going to be considered a restaurant. And, you know, my personal reading of it, it's, I think the BYOB statute applies to restaurants, and I don't know if your establishment is going to classify as a restaurant. And so concern me, because I also, the first email you sent, you said you had 14 teenagers that were running a place, and then you're going to have BYOB. As a personal injury attorney who deals with a lot of victims of drunk driving, I think that's a real big problem. And I have a big concern about alcohol in there without it being a licensed establishment. And I just think that's a mistake to go down that road. I don't have a problem with the other language here. I think it's great the city has, you know, agreed to knock some of the fees down a little bit. You know, I'd be willing to consider that a little bit more, but the alcohol, the prince of alcohol there, running it with teenagers, that's a big thing.
And, you know, just before you go, Councilwoman, Bill, do we just clarify that? So we did, there were email exchanges about this, this question of alcohol, BYOB, and just for, for the purposes of the, the record, if you could just kind of clarify where we ended up with that.
I think that was the city's position, that this is not a restaurant. You know, my interpretation of the statute that allows for BYOB policy is that it is, you know, it only applies to restaurants. It's not just a view of what, what would allow BYOB, not every establishment, all for that, at the restaurant use. And then the statute provides some other, you know, technical uses, but this, you know, in my interpretation, look at that. So that's why, you know, it's probably important to clarify that.
Could Mr. Spring apply for a liquor license as a social club through the state?
There is a social club license. I, I would defer to him on how his business is operated, whether or not he's eligible to apply for that license. But if there's eligibility for a club license, then he's more than welcome to apply. But I, I just wouldn't know if his business would be eligible. I don't have that much knowledge about how it's incorporated.
Okay. Yeah. I, you know, I, I would, I maybe have come to this late, but I, because we haven't really talked about this body a lot. But I wouldn't have a hard, a problem with participating in a meeting. It just seems that we, you know, to get a full picture, to make sure we have a full picture of this, because it, if there's email exchanges, there's, soon there's, I don't really, you know, I'd rather do it completely, rather than have to change this again. And, you know, maybe talk about what's going, what are we doing there? What are we going to permit there? Unless that account's already been done, it, it doesn't feel like it has been done. I wouldn't, I would volunteer to participate in it if others wanted to. I, I agree with the councilmen about the issue about alcohol on teams. And, you know, we really need to straighten that out and, and not like piecemeal, or if there's ideas of different things that are going to go on there, like, let's clear them up first, or they, should they be in the ordinance? I, you know, it's just, you know, maybe an opportunity. But I, you know, I agree more on that.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
No, you can't.
Um.
Mr. Tree, you know.
I have, I have looked at this ordinance, and the first thing I noticed is that it was codified in 1990. So the fees that are in place, the licensing fees have been in place for, is that 30 years? Okay. And in fact, this, this particular amendment to the section of the administrative code, sounds important, actually lowers the fees. I, it feels to me, while I appreciate the concerns and the issues that are being raised and the impact to a business, they are real concerns, and they need to be addressed. But it seems to me that we might be conflating the issues with a particular business versus an ordinance that is generic for the entire community as a whole. I don't disagree that conversation is needed and should happen. But I don't think, I don't think reflecting it in the ordinance is the right thing. Because this is, this is not being done, in my opinion, this is not being done targeting a particular individual. You can't, no, you cannot.
Other comments?
Okay. So I, I personally feel, I'm okay with the ordinance, the way it's being presented. But I do think that there is a need, I'm not even going to say opportunity, a need for members of the city administration and officers to work through compromise to try to find a solution to this without, you know, kind of a parallel track to, you know, introducing an ordinance.
Council President, do you have anything?
I'm concerned about the alcohol part as well. And I don't know what the state statutes are for having a social club apply for a license, but given that the age of the members and the just possibility of it not being monitored correctly has, just, it's, I'm concerned about it. I don't think we should address the alcohol.
That's still a question. No. This isn't, this is an ordinance that we're considering for the city, not just for one participant who happens to be in the room. So I want to be careful about that. And Bill, I would like a clarification. In this ordinance, there will be no alcohol permitted in social clubs, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So the alcohol issue is not an issue, because it would not be permitted.
Okay. And, and just to clarify, without hearing from the public again, the, the individual, the individual we spoke earlier, the concern is that the BYOB should be allowed outside of a restaurant classification. Is that, is that, I think that's my understanding.
My understanding is that of Mr. Wall's comment is that, I think that's what needs to be discussed. There may be another interpretation on that. I think the statute is clear.
So, so, so based on your review of the statute, you're, you're, you're comfortable with this requirement that, well, that BYOB basically is not allowed?
Well, yeah, I think the, the language is appropriate, because it makes the exception for a licensed establishment. If you have.
If you have a liquor license, you can.
You're fine, and you operate within the confines of that license. According to the regulations, that, you know, covering that license, it's fine. It's just, we're waiting for making clear that the city's position is that the, it's not, that, it's not a restaurant, BYOB doesn't.
I just want to pick up on a point that Councilwoman Amber paid. You know, I think it's important to remember that while this consideration of amending this ordinance was prompted by a particular individual, we are, we are not tailoring it specifically to that individual, right? We are updating it ordinance.
That's my own, right then, when I read it. That's right.
And, and Councilwoman Cominsky's point, I would, I would just say that, you know, we have gone through multiple conversations, there have been a number of emails, there have been a lot of clarifications, legal and otherwise, to Mr. Spring regarding the ordinance. Bill's reviewed this several times. The council president and I have reviewed it several times. We have changed the language as recently as Wednesday to, you know, just clarify, for example, the definition of social club. So I feel as though this ordinance has been well-vetted. And I would like to move forward with its introduction tonight. Are there any other final comments or questions from the council on this?
If we do move forward with the ordinance tonight, if we want to discuss the fees, is that something that we're able to do through this? Or?
I think honestly, you know, I think that the time to be doing this work is before we introduce an ordinance. You know, this has been available to anybody. We have had conversations about it. So, you know, I'm concerned that the council is setting, you know, there have been a couple of occasions when we have gone back after introduction of an ordinance to make further changes, which, you know, slows the process down and honestly, I think doesn't give sufficient kind of credit to the process that had already taken place by the time we get.
So you didn't have the right facts?
I'm going to ask you not to speak, please.
And I agree with you about so many things. I, I want to try to avoid that, which is why my thought was, you know, we move forward with this tonight, but we still have some room to fine-tune it for the next meeting. That's just my ask. You know.
Well, I, I'm going to go, I think it's important that if the council does not want to introduce this ordinance because it has concerns about it, that we do, that the council does not introduce it. I, I don't want to get, we've done this several times now, where we're, where we're introducing things. And then we're going to go through the process of having to make amendments. They're noticing requirements. There's all, there's all kinds of ways that this, these things can go sideways. You know, once the language is shifting, it's changing, and we're wanting to know. And, you know, I have a concern about it in terms of process. And, you know, I don't know if Bill has any thoughts about, yeah.
I'm sorry. Councilman Lyne, could you just clarify what your, what your intent is by your comments? I'm not sure I'm following you. Sorry, Mayor.
So, the only question I really have is regarding. The only question I really have is regarding some of the fees. And, you know, there's been some emails showing that this may be on the higher end of some other fees in Huntington. And, you know, I'm glad that we already cut them down somewhat. And I think that's great, you know. At the end of the day, it's consensus, we all have to agree. You know, this is better than what was before. And, you know, I certainly could support this. But, you know, we want to get to a point where everyone is happy with it, if possible. And so if it was possible to move forward with the ordinance tonight, but then continue to discuss the two parts about the fees. And if it's not an option, it's not an option. But that was what my question was. I didn't think that that really changed the, the language. It was a minor tweak and so that was my question.
Bill, do you have any thoughts about this process of amending ordinance just after introduction? Is it something that?
I, I would say that while, I, I think the fees are kind of a significant part of the ordinance because the, this, the city, you know, had to do some diligence to come up with those fees. And these numbers aren't all that thin air. So if the city is going to, the governing bodies going to make a determination to adjust those fees, I think there has to be a reasonable base, reasonable basis for that. So I think it would require for a discussion. I, I agree with Mayor that there's going to be changes to the fees. I would suggest holding off. But, you know, I can't say that just based on my interactions regarding this ordinance. You know, the, the fees represent the administrative work that goes into issuing these licenses. And it's based on, on that. So it's, there really, there, there was consideration given to what numbers are specifically.
Matt, just to follow up, what is the process when, when these machines, how these machines are licensed, inspected? Can you talk a little bit about the processes and why this is, you know? We have fees for a wide variety of, of things. And so just talk a little bit about the process.
Sure. So in April, May, we start notifying everybody who has a vending machine license. And I think we have, we have around six different locations, I believe, off the top of my head. They either have a vending machine license or, you know, pool table or jukebox. So we send out the letters. They, most people will do them online through STL. However, some do the paper. So the process continued, they let, they fill out their application. We send the applications to the police department. The police department does their inspections, sends them back to us and tells us, you know, yes, the count is correct, the machines are, are, are fine for, for licensing. And then when we receive that back, we issue stickers to put on the back of the machine.
And stickers are issued to kind of the, the business owner?
Correct.
And that person would have applies the stickers. And did the police go back to make sure the stickers are on them at some point?
You know, not usually for vending machine licenses unless there's an issue or a problem with a site. You know, we've not, since two thousand nine, really had maybe one, one time when we had a business that was swapping out or adding more vending machine licenses. And, you know, our public will tell us when they see something like that. So Lieutenant Brown, would be able to expand, expand on what the police do when they go into.
Really, they're, they're, I look at the guidelines, not much of a deal with it, just applying a machine to list on the app, the right machine to list on the application. And those, the application that we receive only has one machine in there. So it's not like that we have to do one more machine and take licenses in the vast, the way.
So I need to know how the council wants to, what the council's thinking on this is. Reconsidering fees, I'm comfortable with the fees personally.
My only concern, and I'm happy to make the motion forward with this, but my concern is, you know, Mr. Spring's lawyer is here, said he's going to challenge it. And, you know, that costs money for the city. So if the mayor understands that and is willing to move forward with that, I'm okay with moving forward. But, you know, as an attorney, you know, when someone comes and testifies and says they're going to challenge it, that definitely means they're going to do that, which is going to cost time and money. And if that's the road you want to go down, I'm okay going down that road. I do have concerns, so.
Well, I would just say that it's a, it's a vote, right? So the council is voting, not just the mayor.
Oh, I know, I know why.
Anyone to feel as though my opinion is offering some undue force on their vote. So I'm going to make that clear individually. Any other concerns with the fee schedule here?
Um, I, I have a question about it quite a lot. What happens if you swap out machines or you lose? You know, like, what happens if, like, do they, then you have to re?
They have to re-license.
And one, so if you, like, your machine breaks or something, then you have to get another license for your new machine.
That's correct.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of introducing ordinance number twenty-four, twenty-two-three? Please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will have a public hearing on this for July twentieth, twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three meeting. At this time, if the governing body will go into closed session, if I had motion to go to closed session, please.
Second.
All favor, go into closed session, please say aye. Aye. We will ask the members of the public to leave. Thank you. As I said, I'm not sure how long this closed session will go. If members of the public wish to make a public comment, they will have to sit outside and kind of just wait until we're, we'll be able to be, probably a couple of hours. Give me an idea with the, I have to meet with the court next week. Give me an idea what the.
I want to laugh. Anybody online? Anyone out there? Are they hiding behind the top of their brain?
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
So who?
All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, let's wait, wait a second. I just want to say, everybody again, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, now you may be. Alright, second?
Second.
All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright.